Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 10, 2022 Oshkosh Council Meeting. Please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Ford is excused. Muggerauer?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Miller is excused. And Paul Mary?
Here.
Five present.
And Councilmember Wojciechowski will lead us in the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a presentation this evening by Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhood Initiative, Go HNI. Welcome, Tom.
Hi, thank you, folks. Appreciate having me here tonight. I'm also joined by my board chair, our board chair, Julie Kiefer. So if you have questions that are beyond my skill level, Julie can probably answer them. Can I see? Oh. There you go. All right, so I'm going to try to accomplish three things tonight. We're going to talk a little bit about where we've been since I started, and then where we're headed for the rest of this year, and then where we're going beyond. So first, a few things. We have, as of a couple of weeks ago, there have been three new neighborhood associations recognized. We started with Ben Woods way back in November. Pam Ruder took that process to the end, and then after she left, they got recognized here. We had recognized downtown Oshkosh, and then, of course, we just recognized Green Acres a couple of weeks ago. We are also very close to another neighborhood association being recognized, we're just a meeting or two away. We also approved 40 Good Neighbor Grants, and that is a program whereby we make, as long as the grantee spends the first $250, we will give them up to $750 to complete a project. And we started three years ago with 20 grants. It became so popular, we moved it to 40 grants, so we still have 40 grants. But we approved 40 Good Neighbor Grants. Fifty-one people applied. The deadline was June 15th, but because of the high demand, we extended it to June 30th. And here we are in the middle of August, and I'm still getting requests for applications. And so the interest level remains high. I hate to tell people no, but we're at the point where we just don't have the funds to do that anymore. But almost $100,000 worth of projects were completed with those things, many of them tree-related, which we'll get to in a few minutes. Also, we helped with a successful Rock the Block event as a collaboration with Habitat for Humanity, the Midtown Neighborhood Association, and the City of Oshkosh. They completed 40, they worked on 41 homes and completed over 130 projects. And for those that may not be aware, this project, it's, I think it's year four, it was this year? This is the fourth year. They choose a neighborhood association, and then they contact people living within the association to get project applications, and then they get volunteer groups to complete those. It's a hugely successful program, and we're very excited about where that's going, and we'll talk more about that as well. Up next for this year, we do have a new South Side Neighborhood Association. We have a meeting scheduled for August 18th, if everything goes right, if we get the mailing out and everything. And at that meeting, they should be in the last phase where they decide on their borders, decide on their name, and finalize their bylaws. So that's very exciting. Well, we don't have a lot of neighborhood associations on the South Side, so we're very excited to do that. I think we need to do more in that area, quite frankly. Also, September 28th is National Good Neighbor Day. That's something that we encourage our neighborhood associations to participate in, and as part of that, we will be at the farmer's market on September 24th to promote that event. There's been a lot of block parties going on. We have several going on between now and the end of the year. If you're interested, on Friday, August 19th, I'm sure Midtown wouldn't mind if you showed up at theirs, but they'll be doing theirs at St. John's Church on Main Street. But there have been a number of those kinds of events. Last year, last week was National Night Out, and we had a number of events on that night as well. We will also be preparing a new city agreement, for those with long memories. You remember that we completed a three-year agreement last year, and we extended an agreement for one year to give us all time to work on a new one, so that's something we'll be working on from now through the rest of the year. And then we are working with a consultant to help us complete a development plan. As soon as that is finished, I will share that with Kelly, and then she can pass it on to whoever she thinks needs to see it. And then we need to begin implementing that plan as well. And the development plan is really a longer-term effort to really determine where we are going to go and what kind of resources we will need to accomplish what we want to do.
And I apologize. I asked for a copy of that because I read it as it was already completed.
No.
So I was a little premature. My apologies.
That's okay. You can email me anytime, Mayor. But I, thanks for doing that, and actually puts pressure on us to actually complete it so that we can actually share it with you. And as far as 223 and beyond, we think we need to be more strategic about recruiting neighborhood associations. One of the wonderful things about this community is that it really is a grassroots effort, but I do think there's more that we could do, working with the city, to identify areas where this might be something that's welcomed. And I mentioned the South Side. We were fortunate that we hopefully have a new one coming onboard of the South Side. The West Side, Green Acres, is only our second one on the West Side. We think there's areas that could benefit from a neighborhood association, so we would like to do a little more in terms of recruiting them and sort of talking about the value of creating a neighborhood association. We'd also like to do more with coaching them. I think that for people that are involved with neighborhood associations, you know, we have 22. I would say half of those are really active. You know, I think there's a benefit to existing, even if you're not active, because if something does come up, you've got an organization in place. But the fact is, I think we need more coaching, and I think part of that coaching is succession planning, because oftentimes, the people that start, that are motivated to start a neighborhood association get, how should we say it? I don't want to say stuck, but they end up in leadership roles that they can't seem to pass on. So I think we need to do more with that. In addition, I think we need to do more in terms of assessing their success. What we have in mind is kind of an annual scorecard, which will kind of say, you know, if there's 10 different benchmarks we're searching, you know, we're trying to reach, how many of those 10 do they, do they meet? So that's something we've not really done before, but we need to do more. Also, Rock the Block 2023 is Menominee South. They are thrilled. It's, it's, we announced it formally to them at their event on National Night Out last week, and they're very excited. I think there's a lot of opportunity there. Habitat is excited as well, because they, as you know, own some properties in that area, and I know they hope to build some homes in the next year in that area. So we're very excited about the prospects there, and I would also like a little shout out to Bella Senior Living. They're going to be a partner. And every, every time we do a Rock the Block, there needs to be kind of a place where people meet and a place where we work out of, and not all neighborhoods have a school or a church convenient to them. But Bella Vista has, has agreed to do that, and they already work closely with the neighborhood association, so we're really excited about that. With the Good Neighbor Grant that I mentioned previously, we really would like to expand that. I think that we could easily, if we had the funds to do it, we could easily distribute 60 grants, but I have, we have two other ideas in mind beyond Good Neighbor Grants. We're toying with the idea of creating a grant program for residents in non-neighborhood associations, maybe a smaller grant program. And I mention that because I had, I had conversations with several people who didn't qualify the Good Neighbor Grant, and number one, we hate to say no to people, but number two, there may be some value to saying, look, you don't have $750 available, but you have $350, and here's some information about neighborhood associations if you'd like to consider joining. But there's work to be done all over the city, and, and we'd like to help with that. The, the third thing with the Good Neighbor Grants is, we had a number of requests this year, not just with this, but also with Rock the Block for tree removal, given our ash tree situation. I'm aware that the city has got some partnerships building to do things on public property. As many of you know, there are hundreds of ash trees, dead ash trees or dying ash trees on private property. We would be interested in creating a small grant program for both removal, I would like to call it a tree renewal program, so that we could remove dead ones and maybe help pay for a new tree. Because I, I walk my dog by, by our neighbor down the street, and she has seven dead ash trees in her yard. She asked for a Good Neighbor Grant. We couldn't give it to her because they're not in a neighborhood association, but I saw her out there with the tree guy, and I could just see visions of a second home in the tree guy's head there, because of all the work he's getting out of this. But there's a lot of those trees out there, and it's great that the ones are being handled on public property, but it's, it's a challenge on private property. So that's something we're thinking about. And then last thing, there is a full implementation of the development plan. We're looking at the potential of growing quite significantly in terms of, if I wanted, if we want to accomplish the things above there, we really need the help to do that. And, but part of that will be us seeking funds, not just from the city as we normally get, but also from private entities. That's something we really have to be better at, and we, in fact, have a grant proposal hopefully going out tomorrow or Friday for a group that we've never approached before, and, and we need to be better about doing that. I've got a couple more slides. This is just a couple of our friends from this River East neighborhood. They don't mind that their photograph is here, because I checked with them first. But this winter, we had a partnership with United Way. They have the 211 program, as many of you know, and they had the little door hangers. And so they partnered with us in order to get neighborhood associations to help distribute those. And we probably had five neighborhood associations that stuffed up and said, we will do that. So we, we got 5,000 of those cards from them, and so we probably distributed about 1,000. And then as part of our program, we have welcome bags, so when we get actually information from the city about people that are newly purchasing homes in neighborhood associations, and as part of the welcome bag, we put the 211 cards in there. But it was a nice partnership with United Way, and we have a number of those. And then I just put this on here because the, just as a reminder, the Good Neighbor Grant really is more of a curb appeal program. It has to be exterior. It has to be visible from the street. Our committee of volunteers that looks at these, a lot of it is, we end up driving by the house just to make sure that whatever projects being proposed can actually be seen from the street. But this actually is on Bowen Street, right next to the gas station on Bowen, and I can't remember what the other street is, going east, but they did a landscaping project that greatly beautified their home, and we've been seeing a lot of that. So that is all I have to share with you. I have time for questions, and I know you have some, so I would love to answer them to the best of my ability.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, thanks for coming tonight. It's always good to hear from, from our partners. Huge supporter of Go HNI and what you guys are doing. From where you started, you know, to today, you guys, as an organization, have refined what you're doing. You've gotten rid of and discontinued some practices and tried to get better at other things, and really focusing on what you're really good at, which for us, it increases the return on our investment.
Sure.
So great work improving our neighborhoods, growing the neighborhood associations, helping facilitate those neighbor grants. You know, and really, for me, the return on the investment is huge. I don't think, as a municipal government, we could do it as efficiently and at that cost if we were trying to do it in-house. And I think the value that you guys provide for us and for the community is, is, is great, and it's at a discount, because like I said, municipality-wise, I don't think we could do it. And I don't want to take any steps backwards. I know, like I said last, you mentioned last year, we, we extended a one-year agreement. Taking a step backwards is not something that I have any interest in doing, so I want to know, do you feel you've got the resources available to you to keep doing what you're doing right now and keep getting better at it, and keep, you know, help us keep growing the neighborhood associations and maintaining what we have?
Sure. I would say, given the list I just showed for the future, no. I think that what we'd like to do, though, is take, once the development plan is created, then we'll work backwards a little bit and say, this is what we'd like to do. We will confirm certain things that the city wants to do and the city has in their plans, and then we will then figure out how do we, how do we resource this?
Can you remind council briefly, I think, just the terms of the, maybe the last, not just this last one-year agreement, but the one year, the three-year before that, it was a three-year?
Hundred thousand a year.
Hundred, and it was three years?
And we continue to offer this year as, as an extension of the last one.
Good. I appreciate the extra, the extra info.
But we, we anticipate, we have room for growth.
Okay. Anticipating, asking for the same amount or more?
We'll see.
Okay. I'd be, I'm supportive of that. I think, like I said, the value you guys are providing is huge.
For us, we need, we need to have a combination. I think, I think the public support is, is huge, and it's, I think, I think, I totally agree with you, of course, that we bring some value. I think we need to be much more aggressive with the private funding.
Agreed.
I think there's, there's great room for growth there.
Awesome. Good to hear.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, you got, you guys are just killing it. I mean, I'm gonna not bore you with repeating what Matt just said.
We never get bored with compliments.
Yeah. No, but, but, but seriously, you guys are knocking it out of the park. Keep it up. I mean, just, just an amazing program, so.
Thank you.
We're seeing those dividends, so thank you very much.
Sure. And I, to get back to Mr. Muggerauer's, Muggerauer's comment, we meet regularly with city planning staff. We meet twice a month, and then Kelly serves as a member of our board, and it, one of the keys is just trying to keep each other notified of what's going on. And like I said, when I think, when I talk about being more strategic with identifying potential neighborhood association spots, we had a meeting last week after National Night Out with a member of the Oshkosh Police Force and Kathy Snell from, from City Hall, just to talk about event planning, and as part of that, we just started talking about this whole concept, and the person, Kate Mann from the Oshkosh Police Force was saying, you know, there are areas in the city that could really benefit from this. And I'm like, we agree with you. And we would work with them as well to say, look, are there, what kind of indicators are you seeing that are telling us that maybe this is something we need to do to do? But if we're going to do that, we do need staff to do it and to do it right. But the city's been great.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Well, I really appreciate the partnerships with Habitat and Rebuilding Together. You know, they, they definitely have complemented what you guys are doing, especially with Rock the Block, and would just kind of ask other council members to consider volunteering with Rock the Block. I've done it several times. It's a blast in Midtown. I think I was staining a fence, and I cut soffit and all kinds of fun stuff. But one of the things, I guess, so with 22 neighborhood associations, since the inception, over half a million dollars invested. We're at 11 active neighborhoods now. So that roughly shakes out to about $10,000 a year to support or sustain.
Right.
Or potentially bring on one or two new ones.
Right.
Obviously, we had a couple of years, you know, over the COVID period where things kind of fell off, and things are back with a boom.
Right.
So really, really appreciate being able to look forward and to seeing what the new development plan suggests. One thing, I guess I would ask is, with the selection of the Rock the Block, I think that falls on Habitat, correct?
No, we, 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 yeah, we took, what we did is, I don't know how it was done previously, but although I know we were very involved, I sent out to all the neighborhood leaders, like the, what we call the alliance leaders for the neighborhood associations, I sent them each a questionnaire with four questions, kind of almost like an RFP. It's like, if your, if your neighborhood association is interested, just answer these questions and tell us why you think you'd be a good partner, and then I shared that information with city staff and then with, with Habitat staff. We had, Menominee South was by far the most interested. We had a second neighborhood association that had some interest that we were going to pursue, had Menominee South fall into it. Happens to be the one you live in. And so we, we, this is the first time we've done it this way, so I'm hoping, now that we've been through the process, that next time we do this, that there will be more interest on the part of some of the neighborhoods.
And I guess I just want to ask a follow-up question. I would love the idea of the annual scorecard for neighborhoods to see how they're doing. Would like to, you know, love to see kind of a scorecard of how Go HNI thinks they're doing in terms of those goals, too. And as you guys are reshaping, I'm really excited for that. But on that, I guess that assessment, do you see that, like marrying up with, like, I think we have over 10 or maybe half dozen neighborhood plans, like formal plans with some of the neighborhood? Do you see that somehow marrying up in those official neighborhood plans?
I think so, but I think what, what we want to get at, and I think this is a little trickier, and thankfully, we have a contact in the sociology department and a contact in public affairs over here who's not here today, but he's, the email is out. What, the value of what we do, in many ways, is, I talk about welcome bags. When someone takes a bag of information and personally delivers it to someone who's new to the neighborhood, there's a value, there's a value to that, and I have, we have a neighborhood leader who is very adamant of how wonderful that was for her. When somebody, when there's a neighborhood meeting and people come to a meeting that don't typically come to a meeting, there's a value to that. So one of the things that we're really dead set on doing is, how do we measure some of those things in a real way? And it's like, there's a qualitative component to that. I have very little expertise in measuring those qualitative things. So, so yes and no, I think some of the city stuff is a little more concrete, you know, which is fine, and I think that's, that, that matters, too. I mean, we talked about the Good Neighbor Grants, that curb appeal does matter. But, but I think we want to get at some of the social connectedness piece of this. Because we saw, in my previous job, the social connectedness piece, especially during the pandemic, was just awful, and people just want to leave in their homes, you know? And, and so we, we, we see that there's a value to this, and we have to learn how to measure it.
Councilmember Erickson?
Thank you. When you said welcoming bags, this jogged my thought for me. Prior to this meeting, we had a rental housing advisory board meeting, and Lyle from World Relief came and spoke, and he's the housing coordinator for World Relief. Have you worked with World Relief in the past, or?
In my previous job, we did, but not with this one yet.
Yeah. And he, he talked about, there's some kind of neighborhood kind of welcoming themes or something, as refugees are coming in and settling, how do we help welcome them into the neighborhood? If, if that's within a neighborhood association, could that be?
Absolutely. We, I think I mentioned it at a previous opportunity, but when we, when I started the job, and I, you know, we inherited the welcome bag program, and I thought, well, this is nice. And then we, I started looking at what's in there, and I saw certain neighbors were putting some of their own materials in there. That's what we really want. It's like, they have, they have a brochure, they have information, whatever it is. And it's like, I'm thinking, we could really do some things with this, and I think the value of welcoming people is huge, so we are very interested in refining that and making it a little more purposeful.
Nice.
Because I think that there's, there's some potential there, especially for refugee families who, it's, it's obviously a very stressful kind of situation to go through.
And I also appreciate just the recognition that there are some maybe grants that could be gone after, or other partnerships and things like that as well.
Oh, yeah.
Certainly. So, thank you so much. It's, it's really exciting to see this transition.
This, this is, the neighborhoods in this community have done some amazing things, and they did it without, some of them without our help. You know, I was at Stevens Park last week, and they missed their 10th anniversary. We celebrated Millers Bay, and this was actually, last year would have been Stevens Park, and I told our leadership, I said, there's no reason you can't celebrate your 10th on your 12th, so we'll plan for next year. But it's like, when I think about the partnership they developed with the city to really work on that park, and to Congress Field, it's another one where that park was just nothing. And, and it's, it's like, not, not every neighborhood association has the public property for that kind of thing, but they do some amazing things, and sometimes they have neighbors that are, you know, can be a challenge. But Lindsay, I have to get back to something you said, that one thing we saw with Good Neighbor Grants issue that I really liked is, we had a couple of landlords apply for them. And that is huge, because it was a case where someone wanted to improve their driveway, and we're like, you own the property, you know, and we get complaints from land, from people that, that, that live, you know, from renters on occasion, but we would love to get landlords more involved through support like that, because we have, people have concerns when there's a lot of renters in a neighborhood, what are we going to do? It's like, well, it doesn't have to be that scary if we can provide some support and send a message to landlords that we can help you, too. So thank you, folks.
Anybody else have any questions? Well, thank you again.
Thanks very much.
All right. We are at citizens' statements to council. Do we have anyone registered, Jesse?
We do not.
We do not. All right. We are at consent agenda. Take a motion and a second.
So move. Second.
Discussion on consent. Councilmember Wojciechowski?
I would ask to have 22, 343 polled for further discussion.
Any others?
Is that 343?
Yes. Okay. Let's go ahead and call the roll on consent minus 22, 343.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Six.
Okay, go ahead. Councilmember Wojciechowski?
Thank you. So this is appointments to committees and commissions, and on the last one, we have Councilman Ford applying to be on one of our committees, and I, I wish he could be here so he could maybe talk a little more about this, but I have some concerns about this. You know, we have a process where council members, you know, give their preferences for what committees they want to be on, and then the mayor chooses what committees we're on, and I believe there's reasons for that, such as making sure that one member doesn't have multiple committees while other members maybe have one or none, to keep the process fair, to make sure we're spread out amongst committees. I just have some concerns that, you know, we would be adding a second councilperson as a, as a resident, technicality, but there's still a council member to a committee. I don't know if we have any other committees with more than one council member on it. So I'm concerned about that. I'm also, I'm just generally concerned that this sets a precedent that council members can now apply to be on any committees as community members. You know, DEI doesn't get a vote, their council member doesn't get a vote, but what's to stop another council member from applying to be on that committee and then having a vote? So I'm concerned about something like that happening. And also, it looks like Long Range Finance has an alternate. I don't know if the website's updated. I see C3 is vacant. I wonder why we wouldn't make the alternate fill the vacant spot, so maybe someone could clarify that. But, you know, obviously, I don't have any qualms with, you know, Matt's qualifications to serve on this committee. I just don't feel like it's appropriate that council members be applying to be on committees other than the ones we were appointed to. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I absolutely, I won't speak for, for Councilmember Ford at all, but I can speak from, this was a conversation that I had with, with Councilmember Ford and the mayor as well. So I chaired the Long Range Finance Committee. Historically, up until April of last year, I believe-ish, Long Range Finance had two council members that were appointed to it. Decision was made to take one of those seats away, to allow citizens more participation, and to reduce the, the burden on council members with, with the demands that boards and commissions have for us, and, and us coming to those to liaise back and forth. Like some other boards and commissions, we struggled to have a quorum at times, and Councilmember Ford had previously served on Long Range Finance. So I approached Councilmember Ford in, in hopes that he would have some interest in rejoining us. The previous idea, I just didn't think was working, that, that we had, we had taken that second spot away, and in this case, just to see if there's any interest of, of Mr. Ford returning to that, that spot. I know myself, I've reached out to the mayor and, and formally applied to a few other boards and commissions over my time to serve as citizen members. We routinely hear how it's a struggle to, to get applicants, and this was a way of filling a vacancy. You're right, we do have an alternate on that one. In terms of timing, wasn't sure that, that the alternate was going to be possibly able to be full-time. I can also say that very shortly, I would suspect, one of the, the current listed is probably going to be removed for lack of attendance, historical lack of attendance. So either way, we're going to be back to the same spot of vacancy after vacancy. And it was my way of trying to make sure the board and commission that I serve on is, is fully staffed and continuing to be able to function and, and provide this council with, with necessary information. So kind of just returning to what it, it kind of was.
And I'll just also say that it was thought at the time last year, in addition to what Deputy Mayor was suggesting, that one of the reasons why we went down to one was because that did not have council liaison representatives. So, I appreciate the questions because we have had situations in the past where council members may have been on boards and commission, were citizen-appointed, and then later became council members. And, you know, it did tend to be a little bit heavier. Deputy Mayor suggested that with the debt work that was going to be coming on, you know, they had concerns about moving things through with some experiential folks. And so, I did put Mr. Ford's application forward as a citizen in consideration of that. So, I just want to, I guess, explain my rationale for moving that forward because I was not quite sure that we wanted to do that either. So, it is certainly something for council to discuss. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I don't have a problem with council members as citizens sitting on these committees. We struggle a lot with this. I think Mike will be a huge asset again on that committee. So I don't see a problem whatsoever with having council members as citizens sit on these boards and commissions. So, thank you.
One second, though, before we move back to you, Aaron. I just, maybe with the clerk or someone, I'm just noticing here that we did not list in the resolution which seats folks were going to. And I believe Mr. Bowen's application is on there because he was moving from an alternate into a full seat. So we missed part of the resolution.
I already made that note because I saw that attachment on Friday.
Right.
So if you want me to verbally enter it into the record, the idea is that Mr. Bowen would go from alternate to full member, and Mr. Lowenstein would go become the alternate on the Plan Commission, and then Mr. Ford would become...
I hope I have that right because Diane is the one that I corresponded with on that.
I wanted to make sure.
Let's just double check.
I saw that Friday, so when I didn't see it in the packet here, I didn't look at it until, you know, we were going through it here. But I did see that on Friday.
Yeah.
Because I wanted to make sure that that was clarified. Because Mr. Bowen wouldn't have been on because he's already the alternate.
Sure.
He would not be on, so...
And I also want to just respond with one more point here. Deputy Mayor mentioned that it's a repetitive issue with folks not applying. Actually, we've had a lot of applicants these last few years, and I've been really impressed with how many people have stepped forward. But what we've also seen over the last couple of years is a significant number of folks moving out of the area, out of the city limits. At least half a dozen in the last two years have dropped off from relocation. So that's, you know, part of what we're seeing, shorter tenures and folks not necessarily being able to finish out their terms. So I just want to share that. And go ahead, Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Thank you. And I completely understand. I, as serving on DEI and SAB even, I know we've had issues trying to fill spots, but now we're at a better spot. Again, I just, I don't know, I just don't feel comfortable approving this and potentially the precedent that it sets. I think if the goal is to go back to having two council members on that committee, then I think that should be a separate issue that we vote on like we did previously. Or perhaps this is a larger discussion of our committees in general, perhaps the structure, how many members on each committee needs to change. But I believe that's a different discussion for a different time. I guess my ask, and I don't know if this needs to be a vote or not, but I would like to have Councilman Ford's separated from the other two so they can be voted on separately, if that makes sense.
So, that's the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second this motion.
Okay.
So the motion is to approve 22343 for Mr. Bowen and Mr. Lowenstein?
So keep them together and then separate Matt.
We have an orig, we need an original motion to approve it, and then we can do the...
Make a amendment, okay.
Yeah.
To remove it from consent?
No, it can be removed from consent, but it hasn't been moved onto the floor yet.
No, we did.
Gotcha.
We did.
Well, you approved the Consent Agenda.
Minus 343.
Who made the motion? We didn't catch it.
I don't think we did. I think we were in the discussion, actually.
22343. I've got Mugerower and Miller for that.
Right. But who moved 2243?
To discuss 22343.
I moved.
Thank you.
343. There we go.
Thank you.
Then I'm making a motion out to separate Councilman Ford's application from the other two.
Second that.
All right, discussion on the separation. Deputy Mayor.
I'll make a brief, I absolutely respect Councilmember Wojciechowski's thoughts on this one. Completely understand and respect it. And I'll still vote to approve Mr. Ford, but I completely get why you want to see him separated and understand it. So, just wanted to acknowledge that.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. So, and this is prior, Aaron, I think, to you, but I think it was, Matt, you and Mike served on that committee for how many years prior to this? As both, as two council members?
Long Range Finance has had two council members since its inception over a decade ago. And then last April is when we took that one.
So that's been going on for 10 years? So, okay, all right. I just didn't know if you were aware of it. Thank you.
And I know that, but we changed, you know, and that's why, if we want to change it back, then let's vote to change it back, is all I'm saying. But I'm just separating because I don't want to hold up the other two because I think that those two need to pass, but also don't want to, yeah, if that makes sense.
So, we should move to approve...
So you're voting on the separation?
So we need the vote on separating Lowenstein and Bowen from Ford.
Correct.
Yes.
So please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugerower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Six.
So, let's now move to approve Lowenstein and Bowen because we're now separated. We need a motion and a second.
It's already on the floor.
We separated it. Okay.
Any discussion on...
Do we need any discussion on Bowen or Lowenstein together?
So then we'll have to do one for Ford?
They've been moved, they're just separated. Unless, you're going to do the minutes. If you want to do it, have a separate motion, you can have it. I don't think you need it technically, but if you want to...
As I understand it, we would have a motion to approve the two together and a separate motion to get it on the floor.
The clerk would like you to do a separate motion.
That's how I got my little forms written down.
Yes.
So who, I'm sorry, who made the motion to approve Lowenstein and Bowen?
Mugerower?
In the second?
Wojciechowski.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion on Bowen and Lowenstein together? Please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugerower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Six.
All right, now we need a motion and a second on Ford.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Is there any other discussion? All right, please call the roll on appointment of Michael Ford as a citizen representative for Long Range Finance.
Wojciechowski?
No.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugerower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Five.
All right, we will now move on to new ordinances. Item number 22346 will not be voted on this evening. This is the first reading. Amend section 25-68 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to snow and ice And just a brief overview, this regarding the salt application to sidewalks by residents, correct?
That's correct. This is a topic that the Sustainability Advisory Board has been discussing, and they want to make sure that in the code, that it is clear that there are options besides applying salt to keep the streets and your, or your sidewalk, the areas that you're responsible for, clear. And just to note that when it is below 15 degrees Fahrenheit, typically, salt does not work. So, to offer some other options. And Councilor Wojciechowski was involved with that also, but it's something that they have been talking about for a while.
Councilmember Wojciechowski.
Yeah, it began, we had a presentation on it, and actually during that, they, the person who was giving the presentation had noted to us that there were some kind of language that needed to be updated in that. So that's what kind of spurred the process. But we're hoping that this will also reduce salt usage and intern damage and runoff and things like that.
All right, would you want to share any of those potential alternatives with folks?
I know that sand is a big one that they encourage folks to use when salt potentially would not be effective, at least that would have some sort of, you know, grip and everything for when folks are walking. And I think they're looking to do some outreach after the code changes to, you know, make sure folks know, you know, what are some maybe safer options, like, you know, Councilor Wojciechowski was saying, to help with the runoff and help with the environment.
Well, this was actually too, we had a, this is one of the presentations from the students from UWO. So in one of those presentations, they gave us a number of alternatives. I think cheese rind was one of them.
Oh, cheese brine, yeah.
Rind was one of the alternatives. So there was a couple that they gave us.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Either at SAB or even within staff, because it seems, it sounds like it was run through Public Works. Any information regarding, basically what this comes down to is liability at the home, on the home front, in terms of homeowners insurance and the liability that we have as property owners? Any change in risk in terms of that change and lessening the requirements in terms of, you know, increasing risk and increasing liability to property owners that we do by removing that requirement? And it's a hard one to answer, I understand, but you guys are bringing it to us, and I'm just thinking from that side of it.
It doesn't change the requirement that you remove the ice. It just suggests that there might be alternatives if, particularly when it's very cold and salt isn't as effective. But it does not change the requirement, you still have to remove it.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Just a reminder, folks, I know it's August, but it's going to come. And the, you know, as this points out to section 2568, that a prior snow event does not, or a new snow event does not extend the deadline from the first one. It, you know, we can't let it like layer up. We do have a lot of folks who walk and use the sidewalks, and so appreciate that. Okay, again, no action on that item. We'll move on then to pending ordinance 223347. Amend sections, vary sections of chapter 30 zoning ordinance. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on this item. Ms. Nythorth, would you like to share some of the updates there on that?
Sure, and I'll lean on Planning Manager lines, too. This is just a lot of cleanup. We do this a couple times a year as we are working on projects, and our zoning code is a living, working document, so it continuously changes. And as you'll see in here, we just have multiple items that we are just looking at changing, sometimes very slightly, sometimes it's, you know, just a trend, you know, that we are seeing that we're, you know, things, you know, we think are moving in that direction. So, Mark, do you think there's any specific ones maybe you wanted to highlight that might interest council?
No, not specifically. A large number of these are really clarifications in this case, is as we've administered the code since 2017, when it went into effect, there's ones that people have asked clarification questions on. So we felt it was appropriate, like, let's just get that clarification straight into the code. That way, there's no misunderstanding of them. Some of them, as Kelly mentioned, are just adding things that we found that need to be addressed in the code. For example, section two and three of your ordinance, our two new conditionally used permits for adaptive reuse, that as we've applied the new code, we've found that there's a hole kind of for that situation. And we actually have a couple of proprietors that have reached out to us that are interested in doing something that this would help them facilitate that. And then another room are just updating some things we worked through, for example, with Public Works on exceeding the maximum lighting, for example, along the right-of-way, as we've been doing projects over the last number of years, working with Public Works in streets. It's like, okay, if a property wants to light our right-of-way a little bit extra for us, it actually improves it for the city. But making sure we still adhere to those standards on adjoining properties, really just when we talk about the public right-of-way. So it's just, it really is, Kelly mentioned, a living, breathing document that we try to keep up with what's going on in the city.
Yeah, it looks like there are some clarifications on things like temporary moving containers, temporary outdoor storage containers that are non-residential. And also, maybe more specific definition on like perennial plantings, landscape point values. I know, I believe SAB is sending forth some kind of native planting item, so that may kind of tie in with this. Is that right?
Yep, so actually, Plan Commission next week is hearing a new ordinance amendment to expand our list of native plantings. The one that is in here right now today for the perennial plantings is, the way it was written was very hard for developers to understand, and it's one that we frequently deal with developers, and they're using perennial plantings, we're overcalculating the points based on the way it was written. And we've had this clarification with a number of developers over the years. So this is really just cleaning it up, so it's a little bit easier for them to understand exactly what that code requirement is and how many points they get for those plantings.
Just out of curiosity, I believe it would be in this section, too. Last week, visiting some of the neighborhood associations, there were a question that came up about composting and ordinance and inspections and that. I know when I was an intern for the city and doing assistant planner work, I remember working on a draft compost ordinance, but that was 2012, so 10 years ago. Are we looking at doing anything with that anytime soon in conjunction?
Right now, it is not something that we're actively working on, but it is definitely something we could take another look at.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have nothing else on 22347. Please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugerower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Six.
Pending ordinance 22348, approve zone change from suburban mixed-use district to suburban mixed-use district with a planned development overlay for properties located west of South from, South Washburn Street. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on 22348. All right, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugerower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Six.
All right, and we have one new resolution this evening. Approve specific implementation plan amendment for storage buildings located at 2625 South Washburn Street. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? All right, please call the roll.
Wojciechowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Mugerower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Six.
All right, we are at Council Discussion, Direction to City Manager, Future Agenda Items. We have one item listed under Future Agenda Items, the ARPA allocations for non-infrastructure purposes.
Madam Mayor, in the agenda packet, I provided a memo and the applications for five requests for funding that, after review and meeting with these agencies, that I believe fit the criteria that we had established for ARPA funding. In my memo, I talk about some short and long-term goals, specifically helping people with immediate needs, those were impacted by COVID-19, leveraging of ARPA funds with other revenue sources, and avoid duplication of effort with other agencies. And then long-term goals are strategic plan goals, goals that council, excuse me, goals that council gave me are part of that as well, because that's obviously something that's important for us to take a look at from a long-term standpoint. So, those are generally the criteria that were used, the goals we were trying to achieve. You'll see the different applications that are there. I provided you with their full application, as well as a thumbnail summary of each of them, and summarized up there. So just for the public's, you know, edification, the five are Christine Anne Domestic Abuse Shelter, their capital program, $350,000, ADVCAP for an eviction prevention, rental assistance, and I should parenthetically say, also mortgage assistance, eviction prevention for $130,000, COTTS Transitional Housing Program, $250,000, Boys and Girls Club Facility Expansion, $1 Million, and Oshkosh Food Co-op, $220,000. The applications are in there. I'm not sure if you had a chance to... The applications are in there. I'm not sure if you had a chance to read them or not. I really just wanted to give the council, you know, before it's just put on an agenda for consideration, give this to you. Certainly happy to answer questions or field questions that you might have. Jot them down. I can come back at a later time, provide them to all the council members. But I thought it would be good just to get them out in there for the public to absorb, and certainly make, do anything we can to help you make an informed decision.
I do have a question regarding the COTS Transitional Housing Program. In their application or proposal packet, it does not appear that they have completed the proposal. There was like a several paragraph narrative that was attached after that, but there were a number of items in the proposal application form that were not responded to in their narrative. And the rest of the applicants seem to put a lot of time and effort into following the application format that was provided. So I'm just kind of scratching my head a little bit on that. There are some quantification measurements, and also how many people served. I don't know, half a dozen or so pieces out of that proposal that were not responded to in the narrative. So just some questions on that. And then the other question relates to the $1 million for the Boys and Girls Club Facility Expansion. As I understand it, we did not, we were not successful in a grant that we applied for on homeless youth and, with the Neighborhood Investment Grant, but this $1 million and the expansion with Boys and Girls Club would not in any way address that. Is that correct? But it's got the largest allocation recommended.
Yes. The Boys and Girls Club is working closely with the Community Foundation on the grant application for the Runaway Youth Program. Ms. Nyforth and I had an opportunity to meet with them, but in talking with Ms. Grabner, she didn't feel that it was ready for consideration. They're still working on some of those things, but they do intend to follow through with a full application, and they are still working with that. The application you have before you is for their capital program. It's about a $15 to $16 million project. Their request was for $2 million, and I'm recommending $1 million of that two and a half million request.
And we're also seeing if maybe CDBG could help fund the Runaway Youth Program, if that would meet with some of those objectives. So we're trying to see if there's other resources we could apply towards it.
Yeah. Ms. Nyforth accompanied me on, I think, all of these interviews, because we were looking for ways we could leverage our CDBG funds along with private investment. So that was a big consideration. And Ms. Nyforth had some great discussions with the applicants about what we can do to leverage those dollars. And I think that's one of the, that's one example of an opportunity we have. And there are several others that, even ones that I'm not bringing forward to you tonight. We've had discussions with those groups about things they can do to apply for CDBG funds in the future. So it's a great way to engage those nonprofit groups.
So I guess, again, going back to COTS and what appears to me to be an incomplete proposal, because it doesn't respond to some of those items requested, and also a concern with some of the narrative description of what services are provided. Perhaps this is just a communication clarification, but if one goes and applies to COTS currently through their website and fills out the application, an individual in the community got a response back that, you know, they were expected to pay, I don't know, $250 or $280 security deposit. And the response that they got upon application was, well, how are you going to pay for this? You don't have a job. And the narrative seems to suggest that this salary, as far as I can tell in the budget, this salary figure, a lot of this money would go towards, would be towards assisting with job placement and skill development. And then in the budget, they also mentioned, I think it was like, I don't know, $36,000 for rent, but yet there's discussion that they're buying the building. So is that rent what they would be paying father cars? It's just, it's a little fuzzy.
Yeah. I can certainly, I had some discussions with COTS, so some of that may not have been reflected in the application, but I can ask them to supplement that. The building is being purchased for them by the Community Foundation, so the rent they charge is to keep the building, you know, up. That's part of how their program works. They do have, it's a different standard. It's more of a, as I said in the narrative, higher success rate. So they do, they do have demands. They do require payment of rent and things like that. But I'd be happy to get that information to provide you separately.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. We gave you marching orders on homeless, so I don't have any issue with COTS. I mean, they're part of the solution, certainly. Just another great program for homeless people and a way to a successful future for these people. What I want to do is back up a little bit. The Boys and Girls Club, as a percentage of the requests, and I don't have it in front of me, Mark, but as a percentage of the requests, what does that look like that we're giving them?
They made a request of two and a half million, so this is a 40% funding recommendation.
Yeah, and I'd like us to take a stronger look at that. I mean, the Boys and Girls Club deals with more homeless than any of the organizations put together in our community. They serve our most at-risk. They certainly serve our minority community more than any other organization. They're currently under a $16 million project. I'd like us to see that move up as a larger percentage. In the history of Boys and Girls Club, they've never asked this community for a penny. And I think it's time for us to step up, especially for the youth homeless, the couch surfing, all of these things that these people address. Not only that, energy assistance, what the club does for this community is simply amazing, and it's just, it's the best kept secret in the world. I don't see any reason why we can't take a look at funding at least 10% of that project. I mean, we don't have to give them their whole request, but I certainly feel 1.6 million to deal with the homelessness and bring all of these entities under one roof is a reasonable ask.
Councilmember Miller, are you on the Board of Directors?
No.
Okay.
So, I mean, even if I was, I'd be supportive. I'd be even more supportive of this. But we gave you marching orders for homeless, and COTS knocks it out of the park in that program. Obviously, our friends at Day by Day, they've got an amazing program down there as well. And funding the Boys and Girls Club, I think, is just, it's a grand slam homerun. So I guess I'm suggesting to move that number up to 1.6 million, at least 10% of their project. Thank you.
And I think everybody was pretty excited about COTS program coming in. All I'm saying is, if they're knocking that out of the park, I would think that we would see those numbers of people they're serving, what their goal numbers are, as was asked for in the proposal, just as a communication piece.
Yeah, many of these applications were solicited over a year ago, and I don't recall asking them for supplemental information. And I think that's the first thing I can do, is make sure I get the supplemental.
Well, this is the basic, it looks like, in the proposal that they're asking, that we asked for.
This was, this was from a year ago, so I think they, I think we need updated information. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to confirm for us and for the public, Mark, as you and Ms. Nyforth were going through meeting with applicants and kind of reviewing those applications, you know, we're a year after, as you just mentioned, from when we got those. Can you confirm for us, specifically for these five that you've listed for us, this still, this need is still strong, financially needed, no other, I don't want to use the word windfall, but no other sources of, you know, unexpected funding have come in that they don't need these funds, that they still have a true and absolute need for these funds?
That was one of my very first questions, because that was, because of how much time had elapsed and so much, so many other federal programs became available. So these ones are ones that, where the financial need is there. A couple of them just frankly said, well, it's been a long time, Mark, and we moved on without you. A couple of them just said, thanks, but no thanks. They actually did a better job of fundraising. But they're, these ones are legitimate needs, that they're still actively working on their programs.
Thank you. And then as a follow-up, just one second question. I think some of our discussions, and I'm trying to remember back in terms of actual direction, so please correct me if I'm wrong. But one of the tenets of what we were hoping to do was support capital campaigns, support physical needs, not operational. The ADVCAP request, while it is temporary, it's operational. And at the end, it will leave a void that potentially needs to be funded by somebody. And I'm pretty sure either it was implicit or it was implied that the intent was to not support operational needs because of that void it may leave at the end. Whether you answer that now or in the future with us, that's just a question I had on that particular one, because it is specifically calling for funding a position.
And so is COTS.
Yeah.
No, COTS, it says it's for capital campaign. Read the memo.
Yeah, their goal, their goal is to, COTS is for capital. The one that's not, there are two that aren't. One is the ADVCAP, and just give me a moment. Well, the Food Co-op is a loan payoff, excuse me. Let's see. No, as we talked to them, that's the only one. There was another one that I took out because they weren't ready. So just one is for operating costs. In the case of ADVCAP, they typically move from program to program. So if position is not funded with a following grant program, they eliminate those positions. They're very flexible with that. As a case in point, with the Tiny Homes Project, they are going to be adding somebody to their staff to assist with the tiny homes fielding of applications, case management, things like that. They're going to be working on that. If they no longer have that contract with them, they, ADVCAP is very nimble, is probably the way I'm, the word I'm looking for. So in this case, and because they're leveraging WIRA dollars, which are those economic assistance, that's the rent subsidy, or one of the other things that appealed to me, it's also for homeowners. If a homeowner's in trouble and could lose their home, the WIRA dollars, that's the acronym for the program, will provide them assistance. So I felt that to get that program going for a couple of years to bridge the gap through COVID and through all the uncertainty, made more sense than, because I know I heard several people say, we don't want to do necessarily rent subsidies. So there's no rent subsidies, but it's assisting people that might be qualified for rent subsidies. So that's kind of where I was leaning with that. I think it went under the criteria of those in immediate need, and that's kind of where I was leaning that way.
I appreciate it.
So I hope that, I hope that answers.
No, I do. I appreciate that, and you're right. It was also very clear from all of us, leverage as many other dollars as possible. And so I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
With that.
Councilmember Miller.
Oh, okay, yeah, if there's more, yeah, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Mayor. And, Mark, I think you know my position. I'm anti-OPEX, but ADVCAP does an amazing job. And I looked into this a little bit too, Matt. This is funding a position to make sure that the direct assistance that's out there already is getting to the people. Is that, is that where we're at with this?
Yes, and that's why I thought one of the goals is leveraging ARPA funds with other revenue sources.
And again, I don't like OPEX. This is OPEX, but this is one of those cases where it's really not OPEX. It's helping the people that need this get the resources that are out there. And it's my understanding that there's a lot of money there that isn't getting out to these people. Is that, is that accurate?
That's a huge problem that Housing Continuum folks.
Yes.
The group that created the study, that I really use as a script for a lot of my recommendations, and this was identified, getting people into the system. Some of this is advertising, just to make people aware of it, just increase awareness, as well as legal and mediation, as well as access to other funds. That's why I felt this was a very multi-discipline approach.
Yeah. And so I have zero issues funding this. And it's limited time, right? I mean, it's.
Two years.
Two years. So there's just too much money sitting there, and there's too many people that need the money. So I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth for everybody that's at home, because I hate spending money on OPEX, don't mind spending money on CapEx, but this is the one case where it's definitely warranted. So, thank you.
Councilmember Erickson.
Thanks. Just to follow up on that quick rental housing tonight, Lou from ADVCAP did come and speak and gave an update on WIRA. And she said, one of the issues they're running into now is that many folks are hitting that 18-month maximum of WIRA funding. So I think a position like this is also meant to help what's the next step for those folks who no longer have WIRA rental assistance funding available.
Yeah. And I guess, you know, kind of going back to this operational discussion, I mean, the last paragraph of the COTS narrative being out of the format of the proposal specifically says they were offering COTS three years plus, three-plus years and support their operating budget in order to give them a runway to get to know the Oshkosh community and fund their operating in the short term. So I, I'm not quite sure where that distinction is. If, because of the way this was put together and not necessarily in the other work that was done on the proposal itself, it just seems unclear. If we could get some clarification.
That's why I, no, I will clarify it right now. It is not for operating expenses. I made it clear to them that that was not something that we were interested in, and the $250,000, and that's why I made a lesser recommendation as well. It's about 50% of their funding request. And I was very concerned, because I knew these questions about operating expenses were going to come up, and I, but I still owe you more information, and I will do that.
Thank you. So one of the other pieces, just to add on to what Deputy Mayor was saying, you know, we were talking about not going into temporarily funding positions, but we emphasized that we wanted to do 75% to go towards infrastructure, which would reduce some borrowing and therefore, you know, help our taxpayers out. But the other 25% was to go more in the neighborhood of direct assistance to households, because it's American Rescue Plan dollars, right? And so, you know, appreciate that all of these provide direct assistance to folks and to households. I just want to say, I'm sure it wasn't an easy slate, but certainly want to be very transparent in the accounting. Thank you.
That's all I have on that one, Madam Mayor.
All right. Future meetings. A, virtual option for meetings.
I just had that on there as a place marker. Staff isn't in a position to make any recommendation, but I, it's just to keep me honest on that. And I think I said, it'll probably be a while before we have a final recommendation on that. The other one is the joint meeting for the school board. We've identified a date that meets our mutual schedules, October 27th at 5:00 p.m. The mayor and I talked a little bit about some of the topics, and the school district has also spoken with us. But three of the topics that we have on the tentative agenda, one is the school busing, how that's, little status report on how that's doing. We'll have about a month and a half under our belt by the time we have this discussion to see what a full under our belt by the time we have this discussion, to see what a full, regular school year looks like. But early reports are that it's been very popular, and I think the fact that we did the trip route back in February demonstrates that the demand, particularly at North High, is certainly there. The other one is athletic facilities. There's been a lot of discussion about the school district doing things, and I think they're, they would like to give a little update on what they're up to and some of the ideas they have. And then lastly, I spoke with the museum director, Phillips, and she has been working very closely with the school district on a museum education program to basically bring the museum to the kids and then hopefully get the kids to the museum in the process. I can tell you that school superintendent and school board president are actively involved in the museum board, not just in going to the meetings, but having discussions like this. Education is a, is something that is, we've been lacking in at the museum, and Ms. Phillips and her staff are going at it and have brought somebody in. I think she might even bring a few little samples of things to engage in for that meeting. So looking forward to it, and she's got a lot of enthusiasm for that. So those are the three so far. If you can think of anything else, we still have, you know, two-plus months before we're there, but if you think of anything you want to bring it up either here or just, you know, give me a call or an email, and we can add it to the list.
I just want to make sure that we get any materials related to the items that are on the final agenda while in advance, if possible, because in the past, we've, we had some challenges having productive conversations, because the topics weren't, I guess, led up to with documentation would be really helpful. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, this piggybacks quite nicely off of what you just mentioned. The last two times that we've had a joint meeting, in my opinion, and you can go back and watch the tape, they've been wildly unsuccessful. In fact, worthy of even saying that they may not even have been worth meeting. It's been either a one-sided conversation or even a one- or two-person conversation of a total of 14-plus elected officials. So if it's substantive for us and them to meet, absolutely, we should be creating, forming, and improving partnerships with all community, you know, organizations and other municipalities and other governmental entities, including our elected officials. But it's got to be a productive meeting from both sides of the equation, or it's really not worth meeting. I just, I'm sharing that as some sentiment that fellow councilmembers have also shared with me over the past year or two in regards to those meetings, and I'm publicly sharing that with staff, as well as if any school board members are listening to, that we hope that it is a two-way conversation and definitely not a one-way.
I think that's part of the reason we've waited before having another meeting. I think now we have some, I think these are some substantive topics that, whether we have something in advance or not, I'm not going to promise it, but we should be able to get some of that information. Certainly, status of busing, we can have that. The athletic facilities, I think that's something about just making sure that everybody's on the same page in terms of what the school district is doing. There may be some stuff. And Ms. Phillips will certainly be prepared. We discussed that she would, she's looking forward to doing that. So these are meaty subjects, and I think there were some rather vague ones in the past, and I think this will be more to your liking.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Audit presentation is scheduled for September 13th. Normally, we've done that through our budget workshops, but we weren't able to pull that off, so we'll have the audit on September 13th. And then we have two workshops coming up, August 23rd on Clearwell. I don't have anything just yet from Public Works in terms of their discussions with DNR, but that, we'll be providing you something as soon as we can on that one. And then the second budget workshop's August 30th.
So the, just for clarification, then, September 13th audit presentation would be.
We'll do it at the beginning of the meeting.
The beginning, okay.
Yeah.
All right. We're now at council member announcements and statements. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I met with Amy Albright at CVB. She said incredible EAA, the numbers were fantastic, the revenues were fantastic. So I'm sure that everybody that owns a business in Oshkosh is thankful for an incredibly successful EAA. I was out there quite a bit, and it was amazing. So thanks, EAA, and congrats on having a successful year.
Well, I will just share that Parks Advisory Board on Monday, we met, and we actually, once a year, go on-site to different parks and review status. And so we were at 44th Parallel and West Haven Circle, looking at some things that have been done and talking about things that are coming soon, and certainly encourage folks to get out, enjoy our parks while we have fair weather, and really excited that we're doing some pretty wonderful things in our parks. And I'm going to move on to Courtney Hanson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Traffic and Advisory got together again this past, or yesterday, Tuesday, to talk more about turning South Main into a one-lane each direction with a center turn lane. We'll be continuing on that, but it's just another way to make Oshkosh safer and more accessible for people riding bikes, walking, just trying to get into the city from other places. Thank you.
Anyone else on boards or commissions? Okay. We're at City Manager announcements and statements.
I'm doing this for Mr. Maurer, because today was moving day into their temporary facilities. And the reason I point that out is, they will probably be under some technological silence still tomorrow morning. There's a fiber cable that goes into the Parks Building that needs to get redirected towards the water distribution building on Third Avenue, which is where admin, Parks admin will be until the project's completed. And it, fiber isn't as easy as just unplugging it and replugging it in. So we'll probably be back live, taking calls and things like that about 1:00 tomorrow. We've transferred the phones, but for people who are trying to get a hold of Parks, it may be a little difficult, at least through tomorrow noon. But that means, once they're out, the project can then begin to get the Parks Building done. So we're excited about that. I have a memo in your packet about an amendment to an agreement with Polco for additional survey and benchmarking services. Polco is now in a position where their survey data, not only can we use them for surveying, but we can also get benchmarking services where results from similar surveys, they have what's called the National Community Survey, we can actually take our data and compare it to data in other communities. And benchmarking is really the next step when we're talking about performance measures. So we're excited about that. The other one that I was also excited about was, one of the features they have is what's called the National Employee Survey. And I think there's some value in doing some surveying of our employees and seeing how they are feeling on things. So we've added that. So we're excited about that, and that'll be, it'll be starting this year, and then next year, this will be part of our 2023 budget for, as we move forward. Have outstanding issues in there? Happy to answer any questions you might have. I know the mayor is very interested in lifeline rates. The PSC has the information, so they're going to provide feedback, but it's probably going to be a few months before they provide any feedback to us. And then it'll be, if you're interested in lifeline rates, it'll be A. If you're not interested, it'll be B, and then it'll come back for council to determine whether or not that's something that they're interested in doing. So we're getting toward, the light is getting, beginning to show at the end of the tunnel, Madam Mayor.
Just on the first item on our outstanding issues, for folks at home to share a timeline of what we anticipate on the fee to replace special assessments for street improvements discussion, if we could let folks know what we're expecting timeline-wise for that to become more of a public discussion.
Very good.
We will, then Deputy Mayor will give us a motion to go into closed session.
I move, following the adjournment of this meeting, the council may convene into closed session to discuss the mid-year review of the City Manager and play over which the common council has jurisdiction and exercises responsibility pursuant to Section 19.85, Parents 1C of the Wisconsin State Statutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
No.
If to call. Roll call, please.
Bojehowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Muggerower?
Aye.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carried six.
Motion to adjourn.
We just did the motion to adjourn. Go into closed session. Sorry, lost my train of thought. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Yep, motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
[music]